If we could go ahead and call our meeting to order, please. We've got a very large audience tonight, and we appreciate everyone attending the council meeting. If I could ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence, and then we'll ask Ms. Mitchell to lead us in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we call the room, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Singer-Erdley?
Yes, here.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Ms. Lesby Mitchell?
Here.
Ms. Tinglestein?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Here.
Ms. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Thank you. We not only have a courtroom, we have a full house. Each of you should have a copy of the minutes from our last regularly scheduled meeting of August the 26th, if you'd like to look those over for any possible corrections or additions.
Motion for approval, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded. If there are no other questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Also, each council member should have received a copy of our latest check register in your pocket, if you could indicate if you've received that check register. Thank you. First item on our agenda is public comments, and much the way we did at the last meeting, for anyone who may have attended the last meeting, or watched the last meeting on television, most of the folks who have signed up for public comment are here for one particular issue. There are a couple of folks who have issues other than the fairness ordinance, and as we did last week, we'll go ahead and take them first and let them get out of the way of the bigger conversation that everyone is here to have. If I could first call to the podium Veronica Carpenter for the Thrill to Give Parade.
Hello, I'm Veronice Carpenter. I'm with Parks, Recreation, Dance and Gymnastics, and we wanted to close down Main Street on October the 26th, rain date being October the 27th for our Thriller Parade. We raised funds for the Amen House. It's our community project.
Motion, Mayor.
Second.
Motions and seconds everywhere. I think council's pretty excited about the event.
I hope you don't have to judge for me, some of you.
If there are no questions about the Thrill to Give Parade, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Aren't you glad we didn't make you wait two hours?
Thank you.
Okay. Also, on the public sign-in sheet for a different issue is Mr. Stephen Price.
Thank you, Mayor President. Town Council. I want to apologize for upsetting anybody last, whenever it was, when, the 30th or 29th, or 48th, 29th it was. Apparently, I made somebody upset here in this building, and I'm sorry, I apologize. The reason I'm here, I read on the agenda out there on the window that you're going to discuss naming of roads. And I asked the council and mayor, how, recently I've been asking myself, what is the process by which streets and roads are named? Can somebody tell me that?
The developer. The developer primarily chooses, the developer normally chooses those names, Steve.
Well, that explains why we've got the names we've got, which I find very insulting to the true values of civilized life, which should be families, children, homesteads, and activity near the homestead to sustain the people who live in the homestead. And we've got names now, I was, just last week, I was thinking of writing a letter to the news graphic, saying that I've recently discovered that the town has a street called Technology Way. And I would suggest, I was going to put in this letter, that the name be changed to something like Homesteaders Way, or Apple, or Old Orchard Way, or something that indicates life and life's dependency on nature, as opposed to life's, the pressure for everyone to commit his or her life to commerce and technology and money. So here's some, here's some street names that have occurred to me, just since I saw your notice there on the window, or about an hour ago. Old Orchard Street or Road, all these names I'm giving you could be street, road, or way, or in this case, Old Orchard Street could be Old Orchard Way, Old Orchard Road. And I'll read them to you. Homestead Street, Homestead Road, Handicraft Street, Wool Weaver Way, Log Cabin Street, Picnic Path, Apple Street, Pear Street, Plum Street, Peach Street, Persimmon Street, Paw Paw Street, Butterfly Street, Firefly Street, Garden Street, Silence Road, Thinker Street, T-H-I-N-K-E-R, Thinker Street, Reader's Street, Writer's Street, Walkmore Street, Pedestrian Pathway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. As we get into the public comment opportunity, for the main reason the audience is here, just a couple of framing remarks that may help the council and help the audience. Most of these were indicated for last meeting, but they'll still apply for tonight. We've got lots of folks here, we have an overflow crowd in this room, and we have a number of people out in the hallway. But we want to assure you that everyone who has signed up to speak, regardless of where you may be sitting or standing, will have your opportunity. Tonight, I think the council wants to take their time, again, and listen to you. Given the number of participants that we have tonight signed up for public comment, we would ask that you limit your comments to four minutes, as we did at the last meeting. At four minutes, rather than a buzzer or a timer going off, we'll simply wave a piece of paper at the speaker, and then if you could, please wrap up your comments as quickly as you can at that point. As always at council meetings, we ask everyone to be respectful. Since we want the council to hear the comments, any cheering, or jeering, or applauding is simply going to detract from the council's ability to do that. Also, would like to point out for everyone's benefit, that what we're doing tonight is a discussion of public policy. The council, at the end of this discussion, will consider a vote that may alter public policy. But I want to focus on the fact that we're here for a matter of public policy, which is what city councils are supposed to be focused on. And with that little bit said, we will, during the public comment time, we want you to know that it's your opportunity to speak. If you have questions, we're going to make note of those questions, we'll answer as many as we can, as many as we're able to answer after the public comment section is over. But the public comment portion of our meeting is not a debate. It is our opportunity to hear from you. So what I'll do is simply begin calling people in the order in which they have signed up on the sign-in sheet, and we will cycle all the way through to make sure we've included everyone that has signed up to speak. So if I could first call Michael Dahl.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'll start with this quote. If they don't give you a seat at the table, bring a folding chair. Feel the chism. It is certainly self-evident that I should have brought more chairs with me this evening, because I'm sure that the supporters who are here with me could certainly use them. Because diversity is having a seat at the table, inclusion is having a voice, and belonging is having that voice be heard. As a lifelong resident of Georgetown with my family having settled here in 1770s, I am here tonight as a proud supporter of this ordinance. This ordinance, if it passes, will allow us to have a Georgetown that endows upon us to have the full equal and unalienable rights as defined in the Constitution. As a descendant of a Supreme Court Justice and two presidents, I know that they are standing in solidarity with me tonight and in upholding these rights. It is apparent to me, however, that there are a number of people with us who have never watched Mr. Rogers' Neighborhood, and heard his message of inclusivity and loving your neighbor, no matter who they may be. Growing up with Mr. Rogers, and with loving and open parents instilled in me at a very early age, that we treat all people with dignity and respect. Not just those who we choose to give to, it belongs to all of our neighbors. It is simply a part of learning how to be a decent and loving human being, and one that I wish all people knew how to be. For we know this is not a sectional issue, nor this is a partisan issue. This is not even a legal or legislative issue alone. We know that new laws are needed at every level, yes, but law alone cannot make people see wrong. So let us not be blind to our differences, and if we cannot end our differences, at least we can help make the world safe for diversity. For our most basic common link is that we all inhabit this small planet. We all breathe the same air, we all cherish our children's future, and we are all mortal. So why can't we all buy a house and get a job the same way, too? To those who say that discrimination is not a problem, I say this. I and others in this room face it every day, whether it be walking to a store or a place of business, it is there, and it will simply not go away by praying about it. It is not, is it not hypocritical to say that all are welcome, but continue to exclude those for simply being who they are? For when I walk into a shop that was not so far up here, in a city in which discrimination apparently isn't a problem, I was told that we don't serve your kind of people here. So look me in the eyes and tell me that discrimination isn't a problem. I'll be waiting. This is why I'm here this evening. Because I know that this city and Kentucky can be and do better. My greatest friends and allies are the ones that I continue to fight for, and the ones that face the most adversity every single day, and for the reason that we need this ordinance. And so, our city faces a choice this evening. We can choose to cave to our inner fears and remain in the past, or we can choose to have a Georgetown that is even more diverse, a Georgetown that makes no difference for people who buy a house or get a new job here, simply based on who they love, because all of our neighbors deserve to live in an equal and loving neighborhood. And so our fathers brought forth on this continent a new nation conceived in liberty and dedicated to the proposition that all people are created equal.
Thank you. Next on the list is Willow Hambrick.
Lot of microphones. Hi, my name is Willow Hambrick, and I'm a retired middle school teacher here in Georgetown, currently an adjunct professor at Georgetown College, a mother of five, a grandmother of seven, and a Christian. All five of my children are made in the image of God, but only three of them wake up every morning and feel fully accepted and worthy for who God gifted them to be, especially in Kentucky, where there is currently no statewide protection for LGBTQIA+ people. And that is why I urge all of you to become the people who can allow Georgetown to be the 13th city in Kentucky to adopt a fairness ordinance. We need to protect the unprotected in the areas of housing, jobs, and public accommodations. Harper Lee said in the book that I'm sure most of you read, To Kill a Mockingbird, there's just one kind of hoax, hoax. Poet E. Cummings wisely observed, "It takes courage to grow up and become who you really are." Most especially, I say, it takes that courage when you need protection from discrimination. Jesus never said a word about homosexuality in the Bible, but he said a lot about power and control, and without a fairness ordinance, the powerful have control over LGBTQIA+ citizens. And the opposition has said that they don't know of any cases of discrimination. There's good reason for that. There's currently no place to take complaints of discrimination, because it is currently legal to discriminate. That's reason A why we need this ordinance, and the fairness movement here in Georgetown is born of people who drink from the Royal Spring, and has deep and wide support from businesses and from citizens. It's been carefully crafted by members of our own city council, under the watchful eye of legal assistance in this matter. It's born of people who have a heart for those who are marginalized, who still live in closets, and who cower underneath their very skin, and some of whom take their own lives because the burden of trying to get civic fairness is a burden too heavy. This ordinance will protect religious exemptions, state law protects that. Furthermore, no one is trying to change anybody else's religious beliefs. This ordinance is a civil rights decision, not a religious decision. And while you on the council are not entrusted with the job of deciding what is or is not sin, you are charged with the responsibility of ensuring that all citizens of Georgetown feel safe and protected from legal discrimination. As city council members, your vote has the power to free people from discrimination, to bless people, and not to curse. And as a mother of two gay children, I so wish I had the power of your vote this evening. My favorite biblical character is Queen Esther. Her uncle Mordecai went to tell her, "You must go before the king and protect your people." But she knew that without the king's permission, she could be killed in going before the king. Nevertheless, she persisted in her entreaty for the king to protect her people, and the words of her uncle Mordecai were the catalyst of her courage. He told her, "Esther, perhaps it was for a time like this that you were made queen." Well, I say to you, good people on the city council, perhaps it was for a time like this that you were elected to the city council. Be like Esther. Let's be fully welcoming and fully protect all our citizens. Thirteen other cities have already passed a fairness ordinance. Louisville, Lexington, Covington, Vicco, Frankfurt, Morehead, Danville, Midway, Paducah, Maysville, and just recently Dayton have already set their people free. Let's do this tonight, Georgetown. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Scott Mitchell.
Trying to do this off the phone here where I wrote it. We hear a lot about freedom, but you know, we don't have freedom from getting our feelings hurt, and particularly if someone else who's hurting your feelings is going to be sued out of business and lose their homes and their jobs and their livelihood. So far, all of the talk in favor of this misnamed ordinance does not show a compelling need to violate the rights of conscience or religion of business owners or managers, as if there ever should be a reason to violate those rights. I'm all for freedom, and I don't want to hurt anyone's feelings, and I would serve anyone who came in, but I don't want to be forced under the gun of maybe losing everything I've ever worked for, because I want to stand on a principle of, you know, not making a certain thing, or not putting my name on a certain thing that I don't want it to be on. No one has presented any statistics about the need of such an intrusion. Even if you use the statistics from Lexington, it seems to only show, according to the research of a friend of mine that looked it up, only 4.5 cases per year that fit this criteria. And who knows, but none of them, including the attack on Hands-on Originals, may have even been valid. So, and that's a Lexington, I mean, look at the difference in the population between there and here. So, no, there doesn't appear to be a compelling reason because of the amount of cases that's brought out. But we do see plenty of cases across our states where people have lost everything they've ever had, because someone decides, "No, we want you to make that cake, we want you to make, you know, the flower arrangement, or we want you to make that t-shirt. We're not going to go somewhere else and get it done, but we want you to be forced to do it," because, I mean, that doesn't sound very nice to me, as much as we hear about niceness. All we've heard about is people who claim the fear of getting their feelings hurt in these things. And I've got to tell you, I mean, as I said last time, if I go to an atheist and I tell them I want a cake or a shirt or something that says "Jesus Saves," and they say, "I don't want to make that," I should not have the power to sue that person out of business. But that's exactly what you all are, if you vote for this, are doing. And you can't say that it won't happen, because it's already happening. You can read about all the cases across the United States where it's been happening. But I shouldn't have that power to sue someone out of business because I didn't get my way, or I didn't want my feelings to be hurt. Why would you open up our business owners to lawsuits when you have the luxury of looking at the effects of this legislation from cities all across our states that have implemented it? Obviously, it is used as a club to beat society into submission, so they are not able to live their conscience through their business and in public life. A person doesn't have to be a Christian to believe in biology and see that there are two sexes. And it's awfully confusing to have, you know, a man in a dress or something, and you have to go along with that, and you have to participate in that gender dysphoria, or else lose everything you've ever worked for. If I have a homosexual employee that I fire for doing a bad job, I should not have to worry about getting sued because he says it's because he's gay, or something to that effect. And I shouldn't have to prove to a gang of unelected people why I fired him, or risk bankruptcy if I can't prove my innocence. That's not the America that we live in. And to be the whole, they shouldn't sue me with my own tax dollars. And I'll ask a question in this to wrap up, that to me, it seems like there's more at stake here than just making a cake or something. I mean, if I stop a man in a dress from going into a bathroom following an eight-year-old girl, am I going to get sued for infringing on his rights? I ask you to answer that question.
Next on the list is Mr. Matt Tackett.
Mr. Mayor, council members, and fellow citizens, I'm grateful to be here tonight, and appreciate everybody's participation, whatever your views on this ordinance. Proponents of the changes to the law proposed here tonight will tell you that the threats of freedom of religion or speech have been covered by the inclusion of the language of the Kentucky Religious Freedom Act. I would respectfully submit that that is not the case. Don't take my word for it. There is a law journal, you may not be aware of, right here, published in Kentucky. The Kentucky Law Journal, one of the most prestigious and oldest in the country, continues publication since 1881. They did a 19-page meticulous and expert report on that. I'll give you their conclusion. This is in their final paragraph. Quote, "Given the history of religious freedom legislation at the national level and in other states, the Kentucky Religious Freedom Act will likely not have a profound impact on religious freedom in the state without significant improvements." What's worse is that the city of Georgetown tonight is considering an ordinance that would authorize that Georgetown citizens to be, their civil liberties to be placed at risk by the hands of the Lexington Human Rights Commission. Through an open records request, you know, I have communications between this council, between the city attorney and the Lexington Human Rights Commission. Let's take a look at how fair the Lexington Human Rights Commission might be when it comes to issues like religious freedom. I'll keep in mind that the Supreme Court has ruled on this already in the Masterpiece Cake Shop case. Justice Kennedy held that the Free Exercised Clause in the First Amendment borrows even subtle departures from neutrality. Let me say that again, even subtle departures from neutrality. He went on to say that even slight suspicion that state actions stem from animosity to religion or distrust of expressives are excluded by the First Amendment. Now, keep that standard in mind, and let's take a look at some of the record. Now, the Hands-on Originals case that some of you are familiar with, there's quite a bit of material out there that's part of the public record. I'm going to quote from that, and anybody can go and read that at the Kentucky Supreme Court in their website. "The Lexington Human Rights Commission, which this council may very well be sending our citizens to be tried by, the commission's vice chair, with no objection from his colleagues, stated that the commission needed to work to change the views of those who hold religious beliefs, like Adamson's, the owner of Hands-on Originals." That doesn't sound neutral. He wanted to work to change those beliefs. Not provide access to services, work to change the belief. In my opinion, that is the root of ordinance like these. They want to change belief. He went on to say that Kentucky Baptists who severed ties with the Louisville church that accepts same-sex marriage said that this shows the commission, the Lexington Human Rights Commission, needs to continue its work in this area and hope to see a change in attitude. Again, it wasn't about access to services, it was about changing beliefs. That is far more than a subtle departure from neutrality. The fact that Georgetown would consider teeming with such a commission, and more specifically, the lack of specific expression exemptions in this ordinance, in other words, there's nothing in this ordinance that would protect the kind of religious expression that has caused the Adamsons to be involved in a seven-year legal battle at the cost of hundreds of thousands of dollars. Not a bit. Mr. Mayor, at the last meeting, you mentioned the cake example, all right? But there's nothing in this ordinance that would prevent the exact same thing that happened to Mr. Phillips of Masterpiece in the Masterpiece case, or the Adamsons, from happening right here in Georgetown. happening right here in Georgetown. And it's particularly egregious that it would happen under the exact same body that has been prosecuting him for seven years. So, I would say that, you know, we've seen examples of citizens targeted by these outside forces. They look like the politics of personal disruption to me, and I would urge this council not to put their weapon, that weapon, in their hands. I would hope that all the citizens here want to treat everybody respectfully, but part of that respect is respecting that other people hold different opinions. And thank you for your time. I appreciate your attention.
Yes, sir. Next on the list is Barry Allen Togel.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Barry Togel. I live here in Georgetown. I'm a transplant from Michigan. I've lived there all my life, and I came down here five and a half years ago because, for a reason that doesn't need to be brought up now, but I'm glad I made the move because this is where I live and this is the town I love. Since I moved down here, the people have been the best I've ever seen in my life. They stood by me. I developed a disease when I came down here, a month after I moved down here and had to have surgeries. The people that I met were the people that supported me and came to my side when I needed I'm not going to be as articulate as the last speakers, but I'll try to make my point. Growing up, I was bullied, I was beaten up, I was kind of emasculated by certain people for most of my life. I am not gay. I end up having a lot of gay people. They're in my family. The subject usually never comes up. But as far as bullying is concerned, people that complain about being bullied in their life, well, everybody's bullied in their life, some more than others. And the strength of a person as they grow up is, depends on their moral code, the people they're around, the people that support them, the people that taught them, and these are the people that I had. I became stronger as I grew up after being bullied. I could have been a victim, I could have been upset about everything. I will not be part of a victim mentality in this town, at least where I live. People are part of a victim mentality. That's what we're seeing in this ordinance. We're taking people that have been abused, probably, don't deny it, probably are still feeling the results of that abuse throughout their lives. People are probably being discriminated against as they go into different businesses. And as this gentleman, the first speaker, said, I can understand how he could feel if somebody told him to get out of his place, but if he was, and I knew about it, I would be the first person to stand next to him and stop this. Nobody should be allowed to tell somebody they won't do business with them because of who they are, what they look like, what they believe. But if you are a Christian and your religion says that you won't support that, that is our faith, we have a right to stand by that. But we're not stopping anybody else from living their lives. Their lives are important, just as important, they have the same rights I have. They have the same rights I had when I was bullied when I was in school, grade school and high school. Nobody gets away alive in this life. And this is one of the things that you have to deal with. You have to deal with emotional setbacks and things that will hurt you the rest of your life when you're younger. And there are a lot of younger people here that support this ordinance, and I can understand that. But the road to hell is paved with good intentions, and we've seen that across the country and across the globe. And I am not going to support this ordinance. I will do whatever I can to change it once it is applied. I'm sure it's possibly going to pass tonight. I would like to see something more involved. I'd like to see it, the ordinance tabled, to be able to discuss the ambiguities that are involved in this ordinance right now. That ordinance doesn't protect anybody, but it does protect a small group of people that supposedly have been hurt. These people shouldn't be defended. They should not be allowed to, got it, they should not be allowed to be abused like that. So I say an ordinance is, the addition to the ordinance is totally, excuse me, unnecessary and should not be voted on. I know that's probably not the way it's going to happen tonight, but I think it should be tabled for more discussion because I don't think that ordinance explains anything to people except what they are, they are going to be discriminated against. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenneth Thompson, Tim may be in the hallway. Anyone knows Mr. Thompson? If he arrives, we'll be glad to give him this opportunity to speak. Tim, could you possibly turn on the fans? There's a lot of...
Oh, that's my boy. Turn out the lights on, man.
Thank you. Next on the list is Wayne Robey.
Hello. My name's Wayne Robey. I'm a resident of Stampin' Ground. I still question the alleged need for this ordinance. I believe it was in 2016, there was a Pride Festival here in Georgetown, and the organizer of that festival was quoted as saying that during the festival, there was no one offered a single native comment to the people of the Pride Festival anywhere. Where are the attacks that make this such a burning issue to the point that the council is on the verge of enacting an ordinance that will threaten the very people who have made this town what it is? It was stated in this meeting two weeks ago that anyone charged with a violation of the fairness ordinance, their case would be handed over to the Lexington Fayette Urban County Human Rights Commission. As we know, this is the same group that has spent the past seven years expending great effort to punish Hands-on Originals for refusing to print a message that is clearly at odds with God's Word in the Holy Bible. Even though Fayette Circuit Court and the Kentucky Court of Appeals both ruled in favor of Hands-on Originals, the Lexington HRC has left no stone unturned to take this case to the highest level in the state of Kentucky in their misguided attempt to attack Christians for standing up for their beliefs. The words of the commission's vice chair, with no objection of his colleagues, stated that the commission needs to work to change the views of those who hold religious beliefs, like the good folks who own Hands-on Originals. He also complained that Kentucky Baptists had severed ties with the Louisville church that accepts same-sex marriages. How chilling to think that our citizens may be turned over to the thought police twelve miles down the road. So much for religious freedom. I implore you to think of the consequences of this action before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Horace Hambrik.
Mayor Prather, honorable members of Georgetown City Council, thank you for allowing me to speak once again the topic of fairness in Georgetown. It is a great sadness to me that this issue was not settled two and a half years ago. In the strongest terms, I urge you to add the words sexual orientation and gender identity to the city of Georgetown's nondiscrimination policy. Who can be against fairness, equality, and nondiscrimination? Spoken words that you hear tonight will be important, but it is your votes that matter. Your votes matter now, and they will impact the future of our community. It is important for you to know that there is no uniform, homogenous, monolithic, Christian view on the topic of homosexuality. The Bible records no red-letter words from Jesus on the subject. Many Christians do not believe that homosexuality is sinful. I'm a Christian, and I do not believe that homosexuality is sinful. Ultimately, God decides what is sinful. The Georgetown City Council decides what is fair. I'm reminded of a sign that I saw forty years ago in an inhaled intensive care unit. God doesn't make any junk. Members of the LGBTQ community are made in the image of God, just as sure as we are. I know people who have lost their jobs, people who have been denied housing, and people whose lives remain in hiding here in Georgetown because they are gay. Discrimination happens right here, right now. We need a law that is proactively protective. When the rights of one Georgetownian are diminished, the rights of all Georgetownians are threatened. If you were a member of the LGBTQ community, would you want to continue the status quo? The aspirational words of our Declaration of Independence and the words on the Statue of Liberty do not make laws. Guided by their inspiration, your votes make the laws. In my practice of pediatrics here in Georgetown, I've had the privilege of knowing and caring for children who are homosexual, transgender, bisexual, and questioning. I know children who are persecuted because of this. I've tried to share their pain and to affirm them for who they are. I have two gay children. I can promise you that these are not volitional lifestyle choices. These are identities that are agonized over, examined, and reexamined. People do not willfully and capriciously decide who they want to be. They simply want to be fully accepted for who they are. Medical statistics document that the rates of depression, anxiety, suicide ideation, suicide attempts, and completed suicides are dramatically higher in the LGBTQ community than in the straight community. Tonight, when you vote yes to this ordinance, you will begin a process of acceptance, affirmation, and healing that these people in this community need. All of Kentucky's Fortune 500 businesses, including Toyota, have their own LGBTQ nondiscrimination policies. Business is pro-fairness. Georgetown College has recently added sexual orientation and gender identity to its nondiscrimination policy. Lady Justice stands blindfolded at the top of our courthouse, symbolizing that all are equal under the law. The ground is also level at the foot of the cross. Please add the words sexual orientation and gender identity to the nondiscrimination policy of the city of Georgetown. Please bring healing, understanding, love, and acceptance to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Marcy Holliday.
Mayor Prather and city council people, my name's Marcy Holliday, and I'm here tonight. I'm a Christian. I'm a Georgetownian. I'm a Scott Countyan. I'm a Kentuckian. And I simply want to say that many, this is a matter which I see belongs to more of our government than our churches. I'm a Christian, but I wanted to teach my children the values myself. But I do think that we want to be fair to all of our citizens, and there is no perfect government. But when I hear people say Georgetown doesn't need an ordinance because there's not discrimination, then I remember people that I've met in my years of teaching in Scott County schools, and I have seen students who have been discriminated against and have met hard situations they had to deal with. And so I simply want to say that we have an opportunity to make Georgetown an even better area. We're not promoting treating people unfairly who are business owners. We're promoting treating people fairly who are citizens of this county and state and country. And I hope that you will vote in favor of the fairness commission. Petition. Is that the word?
Ordinance.
Okay. I'm speaking on behalf of the people in the ninety-five to one hundred and five generations. So...
Thank you. Next on the list is Steve Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmen, women, citizens. Forgive me an opportunity to share tonight. My name is Steve Smith. I'm a resident of Scott County since 2006, enjoy living in this county. And I'm also the pastor of Penn Memorial Baptist Church out in Stampin' Ground. But I'm here to represent not only my own opinion, but also the opinion of many families in our church that live here in Georgetown. And we're opposed to the fairness ordinance. You see, we were taught in school that there are two chromosomes, an X and a Y chromosome, and it determines sex and gender. Now we're being told, I went online and looked, there's at least sixty-one more personal pronouns that we must protect as gender. Now, I don't know how many more are coming our way, but it looks like more are coming our way. And what will we do with that? Science tells us there's no such thing as a gay gene, and these genders are based more on feelings than any other scientific proof. Therefore, the confusion that's been created already, and then now is going to be created in the next generation, will only create division, not unity within our community. So punishing the business community that we're a part of is not the solution. We need to ask the community, the whole community first, before we let the gender genie out of the bottle. Just what should we do? That's all I have to say.
Yes, sir. Next on the sign-in sheet is Danny Woolham, Sr.
How you doing today? My name is Danny Woolham, Sr., and I'm reading this on behalf of my twin brother, Donny. It says, "Council members and Mr. Mayor, my name is Donny Woolham. I graduated from Scott County High School in eighty-four. I grew up in the seventies and eighties being gay. Was pretty much behind closed doors. It was not wise to be open at that time. For me, I couldn't be myself because I've been picked on and even beat up. I can verify that because I took up on quite a few times myself. But as I got older, I secured myself, or older, and secured with myself as a person my sexuality, I got myself sustained back to be me, a gay man who believes that every gay, lesbian, transgender, bisexual person be treated fairly and equally. It should not be about who you sleep with, it should be about human rights to be yourself. So if you have any human kindness, you should vote yes for this. Thank you, Donny Woolham." And I put my two cents in, if you don't mind. I grew up back in the seventies and eighties also myself. I've been in Scott County. I grew up here, I've been here fifty-three years, and I've seen this place change, some for the bad, some for the good. But I actually believe people are people. They're going to be who they are, and nobody should be able to change them, and nobody should be able to penalize them for who they are. So I believe this is a fairness for everybody, and it should be voted for. Thank you, and I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Next on the list is Mr. Bob Graham. Next on the list is Mr. Bob Graham.
My name is Bob Graham. Billy Graham's my dad, by the way. Not the same one, but he is Billy Graham. And I have... I'm a retired Baptist preacher, and I would like to say to the two that said that Jesus never said anything against homosexuality, it's not true. In Romans, Chapter One, you'll see it real clearly, and Jesus was the author of the entire New Testament. So he did say something against it. And also, I want to say that our nation is a nation under God. Our nation was formed on Christian principles. If you go back and look at our forefathers, it just unreal some of the things that you'll see that these guys did and what they went through for Christian values. We've gotten God we trust on our money. We've got the Ten Commandments in our Supreme Court. We've got it all over our country for a reason, and that's because our forefathers were Christians, and they wanted this nation to be brought up under Christian values. And what they want to do today is not Christian values, and so we have to be very careful about that. That's all I've got to say. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Next on the list is Angie Tetter. Tim, would you see if Angie Tetter is in the hallway?
She's coming. I hear her.
It's crowded out there. Good evening. I just want to say that I'm opposed to this ordinance. I think if you vote yes for it, it will be a mistake only because this is not the last step. There's always another step to be taken. When you think about all the letters that are used to describe a person, LGBTQ, something like that, and then somebody else said one A, I don't know. I mean, there are so many different letters. I'm afraid of what the next letter might be. And then you're going to be asked, you've got to be fair and accept this too. I say be very, very careful with what you decide today. This is not about fairness. It needs to be what is right. Rightness is more important than fairness. Thank you very much. God bless you.
Thank you. Next on the list, Danny Woolhams, Jr.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, today I'm back, and today I'm wearing a cape. I'm wearing a cape not just because I think capes lost their fashionability far too soon, but because they remind me of superheroes and of doing great things. They remind me of the power and the resiliency and the fight that comes for standing up for other people, and the amount of courage it takes to care for the people who don't have your same power. But despite wearing this cape, this morning, as I was leaving my house in Lexington, I still wrapped up my cape just a little bit more in the off chance that my next-door neighbors might see it. Their mother's my landlord, and while I don't know her feelings about fairness, it still makes me a little nervous to be obviously gay. Two weeks ago, I heard people discuss how we cannot legislate hate or rudeness or kindness, and I agree. It's why I still find myself sometimes hiding my queerness in different scenarios and the off chance that being who I am puts me in danger or sets me up for humiliation or shame. I am open about my sexuality, but queer people all over know that there are times that we are indeed forced to hide our queerness, even if we have these sorts of protections. That being said, the safety of knowing that I have a place to live no matter what, no matter whom I love, helps me every day. There is a peace that comes to my mind knowing that if my neighbors do see my beautiful rainbow cape, that I'm not going to be evicted for that. I appreciate knowing that if something were to happen with my current workplace, which I appreciate welcomes me no matter what the ordinance is. But I know that if the ordinance were repealed, I know that... Sorry. I know that if my queerness were revealed, that speaking to you here today doesn't bar me from employment in Lexington. And while I am single, I do appreciate the ability to go on dates with past boyfriends to places in town without the worry about being unable to complete a meal. There are indeed great places in Georgetown that I know are welcoming to queer people. And as our former mayor did remind us two weeks ago, we are in fact a capitalist country. So why is it that I do not feel like I can just visit those businesses that support queerness and avoid those that do not? The answer is in the human element of these interactions. Capitalism often leaves behind the importance of the human connection in our transactions and in our policies. In a world without a fairness ordinance or civil rights protections, we would have businesses that bar people from spending money at their establishments. People of color, queer people, people with disabilities, would find themselves moving away to find those more accommodating businesses, to find those more accommodating towns, and to find those more accommodating places to live. We would lose those people, many for forever. Georgetown is constantly changing. My mother's home is no longer the farm it used to be, and the portion of the elk corn that I used to play as a child is now a housing development. People are continuing to come in, and this city is thriving. Georgetown is attracting all sorts of talent to work here and raise their families here. But what about those children who have grown up and left? What about the people that Georgetown could be keeping? Seeking safety, I did leave Georgetown, and I had to learn to forgive the city that first stole my heart. I am unsure if I would move back even if there were a fairness ordinance passed, because I have established my new life somewhere else. But it isn't too late for generations that to come and iterations that are still growing here. This past July, Lexington celebrated twenty years of its own ordinance, and I was so proud to call my new home city home as it led the way for Kentucky. It's not too late to be counted among those leaders in our state. Since we last met, there was news on an interracial couple being denied the use of a space for their wedding because interracial marriages were against someone sincerely held religious belief. You have already heard and will continue to hear many arguments about religion this evening, and I hope you will remember this isn't a religious question. I hope you all decide to be superheroes. I hope you remember, community members, we are not a wait-and-see society that allows our community members to suffer until we have met a critical mass of suffering. You don't have to wear a cape to be a superhero, and I look forward to celebrating your bravery after this night has ended. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next on the list is Mark Smith.
My name is Mark Smith. My wife and I are residents of the county. I've been for a long time. We also own a business here in the city that employs more than eight folks, so this fell on our radar screen as a result. It's important to me to say a couple things first. One, members of the council and Mr. Mayor, and really everyone who spoke two weeks ago and then again tonight, I have tremendous respect for all of you. Reason is, it's hard to take a stand, right? It's hard to take a stand regardless of which side you're on. You know that you run the risk then of being judged, or your business care not being participated in, being shunned by whoever. So those that are willing to do that, I have tremendous respect for. I think it's also really important, as we noticed last week, my wife and I talked on the way home, we were very proud of our community. It was the first time we'd ever been to a council meeting, and we didn't know to expect protesters or people throwing things, or who knows what, right? And so I made us proud of Scott County and of Georgetown that everyone was so polite and respectful. It's especially important because this is a very nuanced issue, right? We are guilty as a society, I think, in 2019 for making everything right and wrong, evil versus good. And the reality is, many of these issues are very difficult, and there's a lot going on. And if you're like me, you've probably heard a lot of people speak that you agree with at least some of what they say. I met a lady in the hall earlier who I heard speak two weeks ago, who probably made the most compelling compassionate argument I heard, and I disagree with her position, but I loved what she had to say. I'm asking you to vote against this ordinance. And I'm not doing so because I disrespect or don't have love for anyone. My wife and I serve everyone. We have family members and friends who are members of the LGBT community. We love them very much. Our issue with the proposed ordinance is not with fairness, and it's not with love for people. It's not for respect. Our issue with the ordinance is that we feel like it is ambiguous at best. We feel like there are some concerns with the, you know, the actual language of the ordinance, and we have concerns... Well, I'll give you an example. And I'm going to read from the ordinance, and please don't take offense at this because these are not my words. I just don't understand it. Gender identity means manifesting an identity not traditionally associated with one's biological maleness or femaleness. So manifesting an identity. Webster's defines manifesting as readily perceived by the senses and especially by the sense of sight, easily understood or recognized by the mind. Now, you're saying that manifesting those things not typically associated with being male or female. So we would have to recognize that you're male or female, and also recognize because it's easily understood or recognized by the mind that you identify as something other than that. Now, I don't mind if that's true, right? That's wonderful. Happy for you. What I'm scared of is doing it wrong, right? Mr. Mayor, I want to say this part to you, and please, I mean no disrespect. You made this statement last week talking about hands-on originals. I do feel compelled to say one thing about hands-on originals. Blaine Anderson is a friend of mine. He's the owner of Hands-On. I don't know that I would have handled it the same way that Blaine did, but I do know that Blaine loves people. And Blaine did not refuse to serve a person. He refused to print a message. And you brought that up, Mr. Mayor, and said that that is the distinction in the law, that if you refuse to serve a person, that breaks the law. If you refuse to print a message that goes against, that does not break the law. I don't think it's fair to say that's decided law as the state Supreme Court has not yet decided. But what I do know for sure is, you also said, even though you felt that was decided, that you would send Scott County businesses for the Lexington Bay Human Rights Commission, who has now spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to disagree with what you said is decided law. That scares me. France, again, we respect and love everyone. We're concerned about this ordinance, so thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Frankie Fitch. Tim, is Frankie Fitch out in the hallway?
He's right here. Oh, there. He is right here. And again, my name is Frankie Fitch. And first of all, I'd like to say this. I hope you all don't think that me as a minister would be standing here saying anything about anything if it weren't in the Word of God. It's there, just as another gentleman said earlier, talking about there in the book of Romans. The Bible also says, "Shall we continue in sin that grace may abound?" The Bible says, "God forbid that we should continue any longer therein." And as a child of God, ladies and gentlemen, when you become a child of God, you turn away from the sinful things. It's that simple. I am against the Fairness Act simply because of what I believe in my heart that the Word of God says. And listen, I said this the last time. It breaks my heart to see people going down roads that God completely is against and say they're right. Give me scripture and verse for that. It's not there. It's not there. I wanted to give you an example the last time. I'm a singer as well. I sing Southern gospel music. We had a booth set up a few years ago here in the Horse Festival. I set my sound system up there at the booth that we had set up, and I was singing and have a good old time singing. And I've got a very loud mouth when it comes down to singing. And a lady that was over the festival, she came up to me, she said, "Mr. Fitch?" I said, "Yes, ma'am." She said, "You're going to have to tone it down." And I'll tell you what this reminded me of, if anybody knows Andy Griffith. On the Andy Griffith Show, Barney was supposed to sing a solo, and Andy kept telling him. Well, that's the lady she kept telling me to where I got down to where I was just a whisper. So if I got to whisper the same God's word, there ain't a bit of need in me of singing it. So I took my sound system down, and the reason why she said that was because there was a gentleman across the way over there selling some kind of music, and he told her to tell that gentleman over there that he couldn't do that because it was offending him. Okay? I don't want to offend anybody. I don't want to offend anybody. I want to stand for what is right and what the Word of God says is right. I'm not against anybody. If you want to live your lifestyle, fine, but don't take my right away from me and what I believe. And I believe what the Word of God says plainly, payday someday. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, Charles Miracle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I am the pastor of Victor Baptist Temple here in Georgetown. I represent our church, and I agree with the preceding speaker, Brother Frankie, that Romans, Chapter One, is still in the Bible. We're not here to discuss the Bible. We are here to discuss the rights of individuals. Therefore, somebody's going to leave this meeting tonight unhappy, some for, some against. Therefore, there has to be a school of solution. Our emotions cannot determine the outcome of this vote, other than the fact that we need to do what is right by everyone involved. Therefore, we need to look around and find out, where do we find the proper manner to determine what is right? Logical way is by majority rules. Majority of people in America are straight. Less than around one percent follow that other program. Therefore, ninety-nine percent of the people, maybe they're not here, but the people that voted you in were part of those people. They went on the idea, they wanted to vote you in because they thought you would do the best job for all of the community, not just one percent, which it appears to be that a lot of people have very... Yeah, I'm sympathetic. I know what the Bible says, been in ministry many, many years. But I also have to agree with the fact that, you know, your sin's going to find you out regardless of what it is. Therefore, the individual store owner should have the right, if he chooses not to serve someone. That's not government's business. That's his business. I think you've taken upon yourselves something that should not be at all, since we all are Americans. But I think we've just kind of overstepped our boundaries when we want to take away the right from one and give to another, and that's exactly what you're going to do. You're going to take the vote from a minority... Excuse me, from a majority to a minority. And we all know that's wrong. It's not based upon values or whatever we think or we like. It's based on numbers. Numbers says ninety-nine percent of the American people are straight. I just pray that you simply don't move by your emotions, or maybe your friends, or what someone else has said, but what is fair to the majority. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is David Weaver.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Yeah, nothing written out, just I believe that from abundance of the heart, mouth speaketh. And I would just like to say that I'm opposed to this, as made mention there, misnamed Amendment Act to the ordinance. As we pledged allegiance to the flag, the final word said "All." And I believe the only word that was ever added after the pledge was created was "God." And as far as, just in a way of analogy, I don't think branches should ever be bigger than the tree, and the tree being all of us. And branches being any kind of gender, whatever thing that we are talking about tonight, it goes a lot further. And as far as fairness, just a way in a hypothetical, I go past places of businesses, say, "We give discounts to this place, this workplace, or that workplace," which I'm not involved in. I kind of feel discriminated against. Is that one of the things that we're going to see come before you all in this matter? Because fairness is a broad spectrum. It doesn't just one branch or another branch. It is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, Millie Roblinski.
Hello again.
Again, my name is Millie Jacoby Robleski. I've lived here all my life and tried to write out some thoughts to stay focused on what I need to say tonight. So I've had some conversations since the last meeting with a few people, honestly, on both sides of the ordinance here, just to kind of learn a little more. I didn't always understand the arguments against it because I think, obviously, it should be passed. So I'll say that right up front. I am very much for this ordinance being passed tonight. But I wanted to explain to some people how I felt and understand how they felt, because I always like to understand other points of view, try to come to some sort of understanding with other people. But what I found, honestly, is just prejudice, plain and simple. You hear it at these meetings, and I understand we can't stop the feelings, but we can send a message that discrimination is not going to be tolerated in our city. In my discussions with some of these people who oppose the issue, I heard so many just troubling arguments, preposterous what-if scenarios, presumptions about members of the LGBTQ community, all these buzzwords that just, to me, show fear and ignorance. And I use that word in its truest sense. I'm not trying to insult anyone by using the word ignorance, but that's the only word I can find. You can choose not to understand something. You can fear what you don't understand, but that does not make discrimination okay. We have a freedom of religion, and I understand that, but that also means freedom from others' religious beliefs. Religious freedom should never be about preventing others from living their lives freely and equally as well. Nothing is being forced on anyone. That argument is making me crazy right now. Nothing is being forced on anyone. Thoughts cannot be legislated. I have absolutely no false hope that this is going to change prejudiced thoughts or stop rude comments. That's not its intent. This is needed to allow equal rights for housing and employment. I keep hearing about going into a shop, going into a shop, going into a shop. Housing and employment, basic needs. People need jobs and they need housing. That's what we're addressing here. There's no threat, in my opinion, to small businesses. If you're a business owner, provide service. Provide it fairly and equally to everyone who comes in your shop. If you don't treat certain segments of the community, and this can be any segment of the community, fairly and equally, they're going to stop coming to your store, and that problem's going to resolve itself. I truly believe that. But I think this is actually good for business, because if I were a business, I would want to come into an inclusive city. That's the city I would want to open a store in. That's the city I would want to shop in. Those are the stores I would go into as a patron. And I keep hearing about the same court case over and over again. What matters here is the daily impact on the people of Georgetown. You're hearing it tonight, and you're going to hear probably more stories after I sit down, stories that this actually happens. This isn't a what-if, or could be, or oh, my goodness, what if we do that? This actually happens to people. Real people who live in this community are telling you their stories. The numbers aren't available, and I hear that, too. We don't have these high numbers of all these reports. There's nowhere to report it. It's... There's not even an argument against it right now. There is no protection at all. Adding a few words to this ordinance, I hope would actually have people pay a little more attention to their actions and what is right, maybe because they don't want to get in trouble, but maybe it makes them change and think a little bit about what they're doing and who they don't like and why. And then they can understand a little better and get rid of a little of the ignorance, which would help some other things. But pay attention to the speakers tonight. Listen to their words. The underlying tones you hear tell you exactly why we need this ordinance. This could have been updated, and it wouldn't have affected hardly anyone. People wouldn't have even known. It won't affect me. I own a business that would be affected by this ordinance, but I don't discriminate. So I would just ask you, this is about asking for a fair, even playing field when applying for housing and employment. That's all. Please don't let it be convoluted with these unrelated thoughts and these what-ifs. It's about fairness for everyone. Thank you.
Next on the list is Jessica Shorki.
Hi. My name is Jessica Shorki. Why do I feel the need to speak out about the Fairness Ordinance? After all, I'm not a lesbian or a bisexual. The Fairness Ordinance could have no effect on my life, whether it passed or not, right? The lack of a Fairness Ordinance protecting LGBTQ people affects everybody. Currently, anyone can be fired if their employer even suspects that they are gay, lesbian, bisexual, or transgender, even if they are not. Housing can be denied to anyone if a landlord thinks they might be LGBTQ or have a family member who is gay or transgender. How do I know that this happens? People on the council have asked for specific instances in which this has happened in the community, and I can tell you of one specific instance where this happened. My husband, a number of years ago, lost his job because his employer thought that he might be gay or transgender. Because my husband lost his job, we lost my husband's income, which was about 70% of our total household income. And I had to struggle to find safe, affordable housing for myself and my 10-year-old son. That had an effect on my life. It had a negative effect on my life, and I am a straight person. Anyone who is either LGBTQ or has a family member or a friend who is LGBTQ, and I think that covers pretty much everyone in the universe, needs to speak out in favor of this ordinance. Think about how your life, or the lives of your friends and loved ones, could possibly be negatively impacted and probably already have been because of the lack of this ordinance. Some people have made religious objections to this ordinance being passed. In America, we do not have a theocracy. We are not ruled by religious beliefs. The religious beliefs of any member in this audience or any member on this council should have no impact on whether they vote for the Fairness Ordinance or not. I know that there are many Christians out there who truly follow the teachings of Jesus, who preached love and acceptance for all. If you are a Christian who follows the actual teachings of Christ, then you need to speak up in favor of the Fairness Ordinance. If you are an LGBTQ person, then you need to speak out in favor of the Fairness Ordinance. If you or a friend or a family member of anyone who is gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, or questioning, you need to speak up and make your voice heard. Everyone deserves fairness in housing and employment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Marcia Morse Charles.
Good evening, Mayor Prather, council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Reverend Marcia Morse Charles, and tonight I come before you to speak from more than one perspective, although time will only allow me to speak primarily to the issue with which I feel most important. Most importantly, I come as pastor of Bluegrass United Church of Christ, an open and affirming faith community in Lexington located just off Georgetown Road. In this capacity, I would like to speak for our and many other theologically progressive faith traditions, which fully affirm and include the LGBT community. As such, me and many of my colleagues across the nominations and even faith traditions were ordained, except in leadership roles, and marry LGBTQ members of our churches and synagogues. As proud as I am of our church's inclusive voice and our commitment to all who seek community, I am also deeply grieved at how some of my own church members are treated when they are away from their church home. And for some of our members, more than a half a dozen, they live or work right here in Georgetown or Scott County. We have church members, and these are the facts, not innuendos or what could be, but we have members who have been some of the most tenured and long-term teachers right here in Scott County, who have transferred to Fayette County School System. Because in Scott County, should it be confirmed that they are in a same-sex relationship, they could be fired, even with tenure. I have listened in my church office through tiers of some of my congregants, when they have shared with me their struggle with gender identity and fear they will lose jobs or be forced out of housing if they courageously live out their authenticity. This is based on valid threats. And perhaps worst of all, I've counseled couples as part of their preparation of taking sacred vows of matrimony, and yet their marriage plans are met with not only excitement, but fear. As with heterosexual couples, of course, they are very excited to take this next step, even more so since our nation finally ruled in favor of at least partial civil rights and made marriage equality the law of the land in 2015. And yet what our nation has continued to deny is the inclusion of the LGBT community in our nation's anti-discriminatory constitutional clause. And this has many repercussions, but allow me to leave you with just one, which has tremendous importance and frankly keeps me up at night. Without the inclusion of the LGBT community in our constitution, gay and lesbian couples rely solely on their city or county municipalities for protection. So sit with this with me for a minute. Perhaps then you are aware, as I am, that I can officiate the marriage of a gay or lesbian couple on a Sunday afternoon in our sanctuary with all the beautiful sacraments instilled, where they are surrounded by family and friends who fully celebrate their love. And yet, should they post a picture of their wedding on social media or have any other way that their legal marriage leaks to an employer or landlord in a city or county without a Fairness Ordinance, that couple could be fired, evicted, or both on the Monday morning following their legal wedding on Sunday afternoon. This is not the case in your neighboring Fayette County. It should not be the case for my Georgetown-Scott County congregants. It's not only absurd in the legal and fair sense, friends, but I also believe that this is ethically wrong, in that if for no other reason than who someone loves, their employment and housing status can be taken from them. You have the power to change this. You do. This subject is tainted with so many haves and have-nots and opinions. I'd just like to say that I think it's past time for Georgetown and Scott County to allow me to be a pastor in the fullest way to my members who love their God and love Scott County and Georgetown and want their legal marriage to be recognized here as well.
Thank you. Next on the list is James Fisher.
You want me to wait for that phone to go off?
Yeah, maybe somebody can find it, let me help. Please, go ahead.
Hey, good to see you all again. I was just basing on the comments that you made last time, Mr. Mayor, saying that our religious freedoms would be protected under our First Amendment rights, saying that after we see what happens with the hands-on originals, that we will better know what to do. But all that's hypothetical. Like, none of that's ever even happened yet. Like, we don't know. So if this was to pass today, with all these things still up in there, because I don't want anybody to be discriminating against either, but if we would pass this today, we are discriminating against Christians, because that is what has happened already. Not that he wants to refuse service to them, because he didn't want to refuse service to them either. He didn't want to print a message that he didn't believe in, and that is a right as an American, just like you have a right to choose to be queer. You have a right to choose to believe in what you want to believe, and that's part of it. But saying that we're going to adapt Lexington's policy, the 70-page policy, that has no inclusion, saying that, hey, we are going to protect your First Amendment right, it's just not there. I mean, what you said sounded really good, but there's no facts based on that. So I would urge us to wait until those facts are based to where, hey, you are protected. That way it's fair for everybody, instead of just saying, well, maybe it'll be fair because people will do the right thing. We know people don't do the right thing. I mean, we're people. We make mistakes. We don't do what's right all the time. So I would urge us to wait and see what happens, until we get some, hey, this is set in stone where all people are protected to be fair, instead of just saying, well, hypothetically, you know, it will be. And thank you all.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I am here reading on behalf of someone who either could not be here for one reason or another, or was afraid to come forward. So you were asking for specific examples, so we have gotten some specific examples. So I'm reading today on behalf of Laura Campbell, and she writes, "Council members and Mr. Mayor, I grew up in Georgetown, attending Garth Elementary, GMS, and finally, Scott County High School. Every summer for almost a decade, I and my family participated in the summer musical by the community theater. As members of Faith Baptist Church, we serve the community, working with food banks, going on mission trips. Every year for almost a decade, I volunteered at the public library, helping with summer reading programs, participating in the teen programs, and caring for the books. I was an involved member of the Georgetown community, and now the Georgetown community is telling me I am not welcome. I am proudly, I'm a proudly married queer person and a proud Kentuckian expat, but my hometown is not proud of me. My right to work, to find housing, to be safe from harassment, none of that is protected by this city. My wife and I met in Lexington, quickly discovering that we both grew up in Georgetown. We have fond memories of driving through downtown, of going to the orchard, or playing in the park. We also know that what we would not feel safe or welcomed if we returned. I urge the council to pass this Fairness Ordinance. Don't force more people to leave in order to be safe and seen. Don't encourage hate and fear. Make Georgetown safe and welcoming for all residents. Make Georgetown an example of love and respect. Thank you.
Next on the sign-in sheet is Ron Fannin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for the opportunity to give a brief statement. My name is Ron Fannin. I am a Georgetown, Kentucky resident. I am opposed to the ordinance for reasons that I gave two weeks ago and that are already in the public record, so I'm not going to repeat those. But I will say that over the past few weeks, I've been talking to my neighbors and other friends, and the question that I get is, why waste your time? The ordinance is a done deal. The mayor and the majority of the council have already made up their minds, is what people are trying to tell me. I said, "I don't really believe that. I believe they have an open mind, and they'll listen to us tonight." All of the protections, concerns of the LGBTQ community are already in place. There is nothing, this ordinance is nothing more than additional government regulations being forced on the people of Georgetown for public recognition of a selected few. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next on the list is Patricia Fannin.
Mr. Mayor, Council, good to be back with you again. Two weeks ago, I asked the question, how will this ordinance be funded? I've heard a lot tonight about the commission in Lexington, and I understand that they've only heard two real cases, and one of them is the one with Hands-On Original that's gone to the Supreme Court. How do you... How do you plan to monitor and fund this? Will there be a Georgetown commission? We're told that you are considering the Lexington Commission, and my question is, why should they be allowed to make decisions that impact our community? Blaine Adamson, who's been mentioned many times tonight, has spent over $250,000 defending his religious freedom. And I know everybody thinks it's not a religious issue, but do we really want that for Georgetown? This young man has a family to support. This is a travesty. Are you willing to risk losing good, productive businesses who bring in tax dollars to this city for the sake of a people with an unknown agenda? Just look at the cases across America. All of them are targeting Christian organizations. Where are the Christians' rights? Who will protect our values and our beliefs, and at what cost? In Definitions by Merriam-Webster, it says, "A wife is the female partner in a marriage, and the husband is the male partner." It defines marriage as "the institution whereby men and women are joined in a special kind of social and legal dependence for the purpose of founding and maintaining a family." These dictionary definitions are in line with biblical definitions, as God created the order for procreation upon the earth. If a man and woman so chooses and are blessed that way, so by definition, no two men, no two women can really make a marriage. The LGBT community wants society to accept them when they haven't accepted the way God has created them. I'm positive that God makes no mistakes. I'm deeply concerned about the moral fiber of Georgetown. And these are facts that I've just given, and they're not what ifs. They're facts, that these cases have been brought against Christian organizations because of their personal beliefs. Where is the fairness for them? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Andrew, would you pull that door to, please? Thank you. Next on the list is Julie McKee.
Thank you, Council, for listening to all of us. It's, I love Georgetown, and one of the things I like about Georgetown is I've never felt uncomfortable coming to you all with my opinion, whether I agree with you or not. We still shake hands and giggle at the end of our gathering. My husband and I moved here 15 years ago, honestly, because of a map. It was halfway between my work and his, and near his doctor. That's why we moved here. But since then, I have accepted this as a wonderful town. It was a town, and now it's a small city. It's really nice. I feel young using my phone for my notes. I've seen lots of changes, and we have survived and thrived through them all. I've seen us go wet. I've seen us go tobacco-free. I've seen the discussions about the syringe exchange program that were very, very lively, but we all discuss them in this government we have here. Passing this ordinance removes gender identity and all other phrases I'm hearing off the table, so that we can be fair to everybody. It will magnify Georgetown's reputation on the place to be, the place to come, the place to live. We see that in other cities that have passed such ordinances. It will assist in our message of being welcoming for all. Is this the last thing that the council's going to look at, relative discrimination? Nope. But we don't know what's down the pike. I think somebody else mentioned that, and I did agree with that point. For those that this is a point of religion, I understand, and I respect your opinion. I am not a member of the LGP, I have to read them, LGBTQIA+ community, but I am their ally. I'm white, I'm straight, I'm cisgender, I'm not non-binary. I've looked them all up. But before that, I do try to live my faith. And in my adult life, Matthew 25 rules my life, mostly in the verses of the '40s. But what that is, is that is to love, welcome the stranger, and include. And what this does, is that does that, that includes to do that. I feel strongly about that. And I'll just end by being really sappy. We pledge the allegiance to the flag and to our country. I love that. But we pledge that we were going to work for liberty and justice for all. And this does that. Please pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on-- Next on the list is Jeff Stone.
Greetings. Thank you for allowing me to talk tonight, lending me your ear for a moment. I think it's important to reiterate what the mayor so eloquently stated in the last meeting. The fairness ordinance is necessary to bring the city of Georgetown up to date with state law and protect all citizens in reference to the ethic of reciprocity, which is more commonly known, and I have not heard a lot of it tonight, "love thy neighbor as thyself." Any discussion concerning the ordinance should be focused entirely on a discussion of policy, not a discussion of religious values, not a discussion concerning the judgment of one's lifestyle. It is simply a discussion of policy. As stated before, the policy in no way legally requires someone to subvert their religious beliefs in order to do business in Georgetown. It is, it does, however, protect citizens from being illegally and unethically judged by standards that they may disagree with. As such, this policy greatly benefits the city of Georgetown, its citizens, and its businesses, to include businesses that may wish to come to Georgetown in the future, much like happened at the last meeting. Folks, it's a digital age. People are watching. Any comment that refers to the limiting of one's rights to practice their chosen religion is invalid. As a Christian, I find it galling, and frankly, it's fear-mongering. The suppression of religious rights argument is an unfortunate trope that is the political strategy of a current divisive federal administration that serves only to divide. So I would ask the council to unanimously adopt this fairness ordinance, and send a clear message that Georgetown, Kentucky is a city that cares for each and every citizen. It is a city that loves thy neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Kyle Fannin.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you for having us out again this evening on this discussion and second reading. After the last meeting, my wife and I, I was standing next to Millie, who spoke earlier. We asked her to go to lunch. Did we go to lunch, Millie? Did we have a good lunch? We had a good lunch. We had an excellent lunch. I'm one of the prejudiced ignorant people that was spoken of. I love Millie. I met with Millie a second time at the library. This is a dividing issue, and you all have decisions to make. Some questions that I have from the last meeting. Are there currently homeless within the community that we're discussing in Georgetown? Are there currently jobless in the city of Georgetown? This ordinance is designed to cure those two said problems, but I believe it's an ordinance that's looking for a problem. As a pastor at Bluegrass Baptist Church, I ought to at least note this. While many different theologians differ on a lot of different things, Jesus did speak on sin and sexual sins in John 8:44. He said to the woman taken in adultery, "You are forgiven," that's loving your neighbor, but he also said, "Go and sin no more." Yes, Jesus didn't speak on homosexuality, but I also will add, he didn't speak on pedophilia. He also didn't speak on rape. Do we need Jesus to speak on everything for us to know what the whole of the Word of God says? I looked up after the last meeting, because the question was asked, or the comment was made, that with the passage of the Fayette County Fairness Ordinance in 1999, that things have gotten better there. In fact, according to a report on WKYT's website, 36% increase in suicide rates since the ordinance has passed. So while many hope passing a fairness ordinance will improve suicide rates within the homosexual community, the facts over the last 20-plus years do not bear that out. The fairness campaign is behind this ordinance. Many are wearing that button. And many within our local community are amiable and kind people. But their organization and their leader recently was arrested at the fair because he was screaming "shame, shame" at Kentucky Farm Bureau and their annual breakfast. I ask, what shame is there? Shame because a company values, their values counter your own? Shame because they will not cower before your demands and your abusive assault? Shame because they have guiding principles that have benefited farmers and families for over 100 years here in Kentucky? What shame is there in living biblical principles and then expressing them publicly in your business? I ask the mayor and the city council, in the case of hands-on, and every time we mention it, most with the fairness groan, because it is a telling example, square in front of us that our eyes can see. How far will you, Mr. Mayor, as the one at head of the council and the commission, allow a statewide group to do the same to a local business in Georgetown? How much tax dollars will we spend pursuing an innocent business? Georgetown voted for President Trump, and some may groan at that. We voted for Senator McConnell. Georgetown voted for Senator Paul and for Representative Barr. None would support such an ordinance. We voted for Governor Bevins as a city. We voted for Senator Thayer and Representative Pratt, all who worked to pass the Kentucky Religious Liberty Act, cited in this very ordinance. In other words, in every election cycle, Georgetown has voted against values that are being purported in this ordinance and proposed. If all these conservative politicians have been overwhelmingly voted for by the residents of Georgetown, what is your future when you cast a vote that identifies you as being both progressive and against religious liberty? To each council member, I ask, are you prepared to assign yourself to an unpopular, unscientific, and unbiblical position?
Thank you. Next on the list is Brittany Martin. Brittany Martin.
Councilmembers, Mayor, my name is Brittany Martin, and I am reading today on behalf of Amanda. My name is Amanda, and I'm 29 years old and was a resident of Georgetown for 27 of those years. I appreciate the opportunity to be heard in regards to the fairness ordinance, as Georgetown will always be my home. My family is here, my truest lifelong friends are here, and they are all raising beautiful families in the community where they will collect both similar and vastly different memories than I did. I remember getting ice cream with my dad at the pharmacy downtown, where Galvin's used to be, for those who are new. Grocery shopping at Windexy, riding bikes through the aisles at the old Walmart, and using imagination to hunt for aliens in the fields underneath condos we have now. All of my best memories are here. It's unfortunate that I also remember having a stranger throw their open bottle of water at me for holding hands with my girlfriend. I remember being nervous to go apply for apartments together, her feeling obligated to wear makeup or dress more feminine. I remember lying to the landlord and saying we were best friends. And it was so normal for us to feel that way, afraid to be ourselves, that it didn't even register to me that there was any other way to be. Can you imagine feeling that you were, at your core, unacceptable, and your only option was to lie? To be careful to kiss your partner goodbye for work inside the house? That having to present what society wants you to be was anything less than normal? Two weeks ago, someone asked how many times discrimination in this way had been reported, and I want to respond by saying, not enough. Maybe it doesn't happen every day, but it shouldn't happen at all. When I was 22 years old, I went to apply for an apartment. I won't say which one or be specific, but I think it's very important to mention that the landlord I dealt with still owns and rents properties here. I went in, filled out all the paperwork. They showed me the apartment. We talked about moving dates. I was told to bring back the deposit by that Friday with my best friend to sign the lease, and I left under the impression the apartment was already mine. We came back Wednesday together, two days early, paid in full. They seemed to be in a bad mood that day compared to our first interaction, but we signed the lease, paid the deposit, and left really excited and proud of ourselves. Later that same day, I was called and told they were sorry, but someone had beat me to the apartment, and it was already rented out. That I could come back and get the deposit, but I could come by myself. My friend didn't have to be with me, so no need to go out of our way to come together. They saw my obviously gay friend with short hair and men's shorts, and knew we weren't just friends. They didn't have to say the words for it to be absolutely clear that they didn't want to rent to us, and why. And no, I didn't report it, because what good would it have done if I did? Speakers mentioned that this ordinance is unnecessary, that it was giving a specific group of people special privilege. By definition, this just isn't true. You already won't be denied because you are straight. Adding an ordinance for members of the LGBTQ community isn't special privilege, it's equal rights. That fact cannot be argued. Georgetown should be better than this conversation. Citizens shouldn't have to express why it's not okay to force a human being into being homeless because you don't approve of their lifestyle. This fairness ordinance is absolutely necessary, and the fact that we are here today at all is proof enough of that. I strongly urge all those responsible to make the right choice. I hope that we can agree our children's memories shouldn't include a fear of being who they are. They may now get their ice cream at Brewster's, grocery shop with delivery apps, and Big Walmart is in its free spirit about riding bikes through the aisles, but Georgetown is a beautiful place to grow up, and I hope we can work together to make it safe and welcoming for everyone. As a Christian myself, I want to end by sharing God's grace with everyone in this room, and hopefully remind those who use their faith as an excuse to isolate members of our community of what message is most important in the eyes of God. Peter 1:8 says, "Finally, all of you, be like-minded, be sympathetic, love one another, be compassionate and humble."
Next on the list is Shandra Oakley.
Mayor, councilmembers, it doesn't seem that awful long ago that there were meetings held all over the United States because people doubted whether blacks held the right to be treated fairly. And it seems like we're doing the same thing again. It's ironic, isn't it? And that's all I'm going to say. You know, as the mother of two gay sons who did not choose to be gay, and who prayed for many years not to be gay, and as the mother of those sons who, raising them in a Christian home, I pray that those sons would not be gay. It is what it is. And those sons do not want to visit me here in Georgetown. They're afraid to come to certain places. As the GM of the Fairfield by Marriott here in Georgetown for four years, some of my very best employees, and in a time where it's hard to find good, reliable employees, my best employees are gay. And they know, all of them have been fired from different jobs because they've been gay, and it's just unfair. And there's no reason in today's world that we're going through the same argument and the same debates that we did years ago for basic human rights in a country that was based on freedom and based on human rights. And so I just beseech you to not discriminate based on sexual orientation, but to let us base ourselves on freedom and to love one another, and to love, as Jesus said, to love your neighbor as yourself, because there is no fear in love, and there's no need to fear anybody because we're all human beings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Ashley Nash.
Good evening, Council. My name is Ashley Nash, and I'm here to read on behalf of my friend and former classmate, Josh Sloan. And the rest of the statement will be his words. My name is Josh Sloan. I'm a 2008 graduate of Scott County High School, and a 2012 graduate of Georgetown College. It has come to my attention that Georgetown is considering enacting a fairness ordinance to protect the rights of its LGBTQ citizens. I have also learned that some members of the community doubt whether such an ordinance is really necessary. I hope by sharing my coming-of-age story, the need for such an ordinance will become self-evident. I cannot remember the first time I heard the word "gay." However, I do remember-- However, I do remember when I learned what it meant. My family attended a very conservative church in Lexington, and on one Sunday I decided that I wanted to sit in during the adult service. I recall the preacher shouting about all of those who would burn in hell. Among the list of doomed people, he kept referring to homosexuals. Having never heard the term, I later asked what it meant. I was told that homosexuals are gays and lesbians and those who lay with members of the same sex. A few years later, I learned what "lay" meant. I moved to Georgetown just in time to enroll as a third grader in Southern Elementary in its after-school YMCA program. It was here that I first suspected that I was different from the other boys. They were obsessed with teasing and flirting with girls. I was not. However, the other boys did quickly teach me that the worst thing one could be in life was gay. Everyone was obsessed with the gays. The words "fag" and "gay" were used like commas when deriding someone. Boys would fight one another just to defend their names and quickly find a girl to date just in case there was any doubt. I was no exception. It was until middle school that I finally realized that I was gay. In sixth grade, it finally dawned on me that I was one of those homosexuals destined for hell. The feelings most boys had for girls, I had for boys. True to their religious creed, my family was also obsessed with mocking and deriding gays every chance they had. On several occasions, I recall family members stating that they would disown their child if he or she were gay, and that it would be better for that child to die in childbirth than face the wrath of God. Unable to confide in friends or family, I did the only thing I could. I tried to pray the gay away. Needless to say, the gay did not go away. Hopeless and destined for hell, I soon began my long battle with depression and suicide. In high school, things got much worse. There were less than 10 students that were openly gay in my class. These individuals' bravery for not hiding who they were was rewarded with harassment, bullying, and malice. Gay panic was rampant, and even the possibility of being gay was enough to permanently ruin one's reputation. If the teachers did notice the rampant homophobia occurring in their classrooms, very few stood up to stop it. For me, the goal of high school was simple, to survive. This meant doing whatever it took to allay suspicions about my orientation. Given the peer pressure from parents and friends and my fear being found out, I had no choice but to get a girlfriend. Without any regard for the nameless lady's young feelings or dignity, I expressed a fake romantic interest in her to be my beard. To my shame, I perpetuated this fiction until I graduated and entered college. My exploitation of her friendship and the betrayal of my LGBTQ brothers and sisters is perhaps my greatest act of cowardice, and it will follow me to my grave. College was supposed to be different. College was the place where you're supposed to discover yourself. I loved Georgetown College. However, it was also where I experienced some of my greatest sorrow. Given the college's religious affiliation, LGBTQ students and faculty, sorry, were not particularly welcomed by some members of the student body and administration.
Ashley, Ashley, can you finish up?
Yes. I hope that my story may serve as an anecdotal evidence of the need for LGBTQ protections in Georgetown. As my story demonstrates, homophobia affects all genders and age groups. I hope that you will have the courage to enact this fairness ordinance, not because it is easy, but because it is right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is, I'm not sure if it's Jim Bell or Jim Ball. Could be Tim.
Tim Bo.
Tim Bo, thank you.
His nickname, Tim Bo. You got all around it though, mayor.
That was close.
Good evening, mayor, council, and citizens. My name is Tim Bo, and I live here in Georgetown. And, well, personally, I'm a sinner, just like I think everybody else is in need of a Savior. And I'm not going to harass other people, and I will defend them if they are. I do oppose this ordinance based on my beliefs, and I want to share a few things quickly from an article written by Richard Nelson. He is the executive director of the Commonwealth Policy Center. He resides in Kuyah, Kentucky. I'll start halfway through his article to keep it short. If anything, he calls them SOGI, Sexual Orientation Gender Identity Laws, deter businesses by creating a difficult climate when it comes to hiring and firing decisions. For example, if an openly homosexual or transgender employee is fired for poor job performance, they can simply claim sexual orientation discrimination, bring it before the Human Rights Commission, and tie up an employer's valuable time and resources on scurrilous claims. I'm not denying that this does happen and unwritely. This is not only unfair, it is problematic for the employers who'd rather avoid deeply personal, unrelated issues unrelated to their work performance. The reality is that numerous businesses have been shut down or punished by SOGI laws. New Mexico's SOGI law was used to fine a photographer over $6,000 for refusing to do a photo shoot of a lesbian wedding. New York's law was used to levy $13,000 fine on an agritourism venue that refused to host a gay wedding. Oregon's law was used to issue a $135,000 fine on the husband and wife who rent a bakery. How are such punitive measures fair or tolerant? But we haven't, but we needn't look so far to see how these laws have been used as tools of intolerance. Right here in Kentucky, and it's been referred to so many times, I'll just rush right through it, Lexington printer Blaine Adamson has fought an eight-year legal battle against Lexington's ordinance that tried to force him to promote an event and message that violated his religious convictions. He's accumulated over $500,000, it says, in legal fees defending his First Amendment rights. Adamson's case challenging Lexington's SOGI law is now in front of the Kentucky Supreme Court. In light of this, it would be prudent for the city to wait until a ruling is handed down. The legal trend is to affirm First Amendment claims of freedom of religion over SOGI discrimination claims. Last summer, the Supreme Court, U.S. Supreme Court, ruled that in Colorado Civil Rights Commission wrongly used a state SOGI law to compel Masterpiece Cake Shop owner Jack Phillips to produce a message contrary to his religious beliefs. There will be claims that opposition to the SOGI law ordinances will hurt the LGBT community. Truth is, one can be for an individual and respect their humanity without embracing and agreeing with all their personal choices. SOGI laws unfortunately fail to allow room for such distinctions. If the city is concerned about dividing the community...
Mr. Bo, if you could draw to a close.
Yes, sir. If the city is concerned about dividing the community, they should reject this proposal and instead insist that every resident practice the golden rule and treat others with respect. This would be true fairness for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, Brooklyn Alcorn.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, I come before you today as a 24-year-old resident of Georgetown. I have lived in Georgetown all my life. I went to Ann Mason, Royal Spring. I'm a Scott County High School graduate. I graduated from Georgetown College, and I now commute to U of L Law School from Georgetown because I am so reluctant to leave the community that I love. In the Obergefell decision, Justice Kennedy talked about the concept "equal dignity in the eyes of the law." He said that the Constitution grants us the right to marry, grants me the right to marry. But I ask today, where was my equal dignity in the eyes of the law when at the age of 15 I started the Gay Straight Alliance at Scott County High School and received threats from the adult members of this community? Where was my equal dignity in the eyes of the law when at age 18 I walked into a women's restroom, which is the gender for which I identify, and a woman looked at me with disgust and then reported to my working manager that I should not be in that restroom? Were it not for the kindness and love of my manager, I could have been fired that day. Where was my equal dignity in the eyes of the law when at the age of 20 I was asked by the leasing office what my relationship to my girlfriend was? We both paused, and I said, "She's my best friend," because I knew that they could deny me an apartment if I told them that I was in love with her. Some people here today say that I am asking for extra rights, rights that are in addition to the rights that they have, rights that make me different. I say that I am just asking for equal rights and equal dignity. My sister Madison is a fifth-grade teacher. She wants to move in with her boyfriend at the end of this year and purchase a home here in Georgetown because he is involved with Scott County Sports and they love this community. My sister Erica wants to be a pediatric oncologist. She wants to buy a house here in Georgetown and move in with her boyfriend because they love this community. I would like to buy a house with my girlfriend in this community because this is the home I've had for 24 years. We are all worried about credit scores, homeowners insurance, down payments. I am the only one who is worried about discrimination because I could be denied a house that I am in love with simply because I am in a relationship with another woman. Today, I ask for equal dignity in the eyes of the law. Justice Kennedy has stated that the Constitution grants me the right to marry, but I come before you today to ask you to grant me and so many others like me the equal dignity to live in the community in which I love without fear of reproach and disgust. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Richard King.
Next. No, sir.
No. Next on the list is Mr. Harold Jesse.
Thank you, mayor, city council. I'm having a little hard time breathing after hearing most of this, to be honest with you. I am for the fairness ordinance for one simple reason. I'm a human being the same as every one of you. We have heard person after person here tonight absolutely condemn who I am as a person. And if you think for one minute that doesn't transcend into housing, employment, how could you leave this meeting and think it does not? It does. It does. And it breaks my heart to hear this. And as someone who grew up here, I've seen this happen. I know what it looks like. Who's someone whose grandfather fought for the American Revolutionary War, whose grandparents moved people into this state? All that's great. I was born here. But more importantly than that, hear me clearly. We are all human beings. Is that too much to ask for? Housing? A place to work? Simply for being who you are? It is not a choice, no more than you can choose who you are. And I say to you, it is a heavy burden. But we choose to live, and that's what we will do. And to these young people that's in here, this young man at the end, time will prove us right. Georgetown is a great place. People have been very compassionate and good to us. One of the most respected men to ever live in this community, Judge Lesby, when he married us, he faced unbelievable backlash from that. So when I asked him, what was his response when people talked to him the way they did? "You are my friend, and it's the right thing to do." And then recently, just recently, within a walking distance of here, we have invested heavily in this community. And we've also had a business license. There's rules when you get a license to operate a business in this city, and there should We have the skills, the resources, but we just faced an ugliness that just happened to us here. It was over housing, an investment that we made. And just recently, the truth finally came out. What the issue was, was simply those people, those kind, we don't want them here. It was like we didn't even exist as a human being. That's what this is about. Don't be fooled about religion. No one owns God. There's plenty of churches in this town. And you know what? I'd like to see 600 more. That would be great. We are all God's children, and I say it's not too much to ask for. A place to live, a place to work. And by the way, if you happen to have us as a neighbor, we'll take care of you when you're sick. We will mow your grass. Matter of fact, we'll mow half the neighborhood if we need to, and we'll pick up the trash. We love this town, and regardless of what happens, we'll still love this town. But you know what? Young people here, we'll never stop fighting. Never. This will happen one day. Maybe today, maybe not. But we're not going away. We're people too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, Kitty Dugood.
I didn't know I was going to be so soon. Got to find my notes. Technology works when you want it to. So there's a lot of things that I was going to say that have already been said, but thank you for having us in this opportunity to speak to you on this important decision. I'm speaking today in support of my friends and my former students. How many of you in this room have heard Judge Lesby say that Georgetown is the best place to live?
Thank you.
Everybody. Exactly. But you know what? It's not the best place to live for some people. I am fortunate to have had many wonderful students and neighbors who are bright and creative and are contributing greatly to society. However, most of them are not contributing to our community because they have been discriminated against, and they're not made to feel welcome in what many call their hometown. Hold on, lost my spot. If I followed the current ordinance like the gentleman from K-State spoke about last time, I would have had to leave many of my students behind. I was not willing to do that, and you shouldn't either. There's been a lot of discussion about cakes and T-shirts, and in my opinion, if you have a business, you are opening it to serve everyone. And if you go to a business who's not willing to take your business, they probably didn't deserve it. As I heard people speak at the last meeting, I was disheartened. 50-plus years ago, you could have changed those five words in this ordinance to "black" or "female." It's about human rights and dignity. We should not have to legislate our moral obligation to our community for people to be treated equally. I'm asking you this evening to support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, William Riley.
My name is William Riley, and I am the pastor at Faith Baptist Church. My name is William Riley, and I am the pastor at Faith Baptist Church, but I come not as the pastor of Faith Baptist Church, but as a citizen. Because I just wanted to make clear that this is not a theological matter. I'm not coming as an expert on this, because what the Bible has to say about this just doesn't matter. We are in a city council meeting talking about city issues, and what I am hearing is citizens, who we are supposed to be listening to, saying, I am being discriminated against. This is not a fair place for me to live. And it is our job to listen to that, no matter what the Bible does or doesn't say, no matter what we feel religion does or doesn't say. It is our job as a city and in this setting in city council to hear our citizens. And so I just encourage you to do that. Hear the citizens, respond, respond to their plight, and provide protection as the government should. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is, I believe it's, could it be Gina Kinser?
Kerwin.
Kerwin, I'm sorry. Gina Kerwin.
Hi, everyone. I had a lot of things I wanted to say, and people said a lot of the things I was going to say tonight. But I just want to say, obviously, we need this ordinance. I think that's kind of a no-brainer. I mean, it's 2019. I personally think it's ridiculous to be having this conversation. I've heard about, tonight somebody mentioned, well, if I own a business and I fire somebody that they're, and they're gay, then they're going to say it's just because they're gay. Well, guess what? I'm an employer too, and we all have the responsibility to document. If somebody's not doing a good job, you have to document that. And if you don't document it, then it's your own fault. You know, it's the same if somebody is black, Hispanic, female. I just think that's a non-issue. Somebody else said that Georgetown is 99% or the country is 99% heterosexual. Well, I would say probably in 1950, 99% of the people thought that black people should be segregated. You know, I just implore you as council members to do the right thing and to think about the separation of church and state. And think about history is going to look, how history is going to look back at this moment. I do think that this fairness ordinance is going to, it's going to pass. If not tonight, it will pass eventually. And passing a fairness ordinance is not going to change people's minds. People are, if you have a mindset that has fire and brimstone in it, a fairness ordinance isn't going to change that. But what a fairness ordinance is going to do is going to start to heal some of the wounds that your citizens have endured and have suffered. And I think for that, I think it's really, really important. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, are there others? I'm sorry. David Bradenbecker?
How you doing this evening? This is the first time I've ever spoken publicly in such a form. I was here during the first reading. I did not speak, I listened to the conversation afterwards. And there's a saying, the devil is in the details. And I am a citizen of Georgetown, and I do believe all of you have already made up your mind in which direction you're going to vote. But I'm going to try to urge you to vote no on this ordinance for these facts. First, the current ordinance, my understanding, and it may have, may have changed, allows 90 days for a person to make a complaint of the discrimination, where other cities have their complaint clause as 30 days. So as it is currently written, we should parallel those cities adjacent to us. But the thing that caught my attention most of all, and is where I have my, it's most important fact to me of the ordinance as it is written, is this, is that you are willing to have a complaint made in Scott County, but are sending that complaint to another city for the decisions to be made upon our people in our community. And I think that is absolutely wrong. I do believe if you are in politics, you take on the tough issues, and those issues need to stay within our parameters. Because God forbid, one day, we're not Scott County, we become Fay County. And that is where I stand. The other issue is, it is okay to have difference of opinions. It is not okay to treat people wrong. We have Democrats, we have Republicans, we have Libertarians, and we can disagree on politics, but that doesn't change how you are as a person or how I should treat you. Unfortunately, our country is moving in a direction that if you side in one direction, you can't be liked. And I think that's a travesty. So based on the ordinance as it is written, I wish you would have worked harder and longer on making sure it runs parallel to others. So that's why I wish you would vote no at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Yvonne Thayer.
I moved the microphone myself this time. Last time I was here, I didn't do it. I, yes, my name is Yvonne Thayer. I'm a resident of Scott County. I wish you all could be out there. I was here last meeting two weeks ago. I just basically stated my name and said that I was against the ord, excuse me, the ordinance, and I didn't say why. I too am a small business owner. I don't have the criteria, you know, I don't have any employees. I'm just self-employed, so I don't think this would really affect me. However, again, I wish you could be out there. Here's my observations. Tears, a lot of pride, we've seen a lot of pride. My dad always said, you know, I'm Hispanic, vive y deje vivir. That's live and let live. You can be prideful. I was here two years ago opposing this ordinance. I still oppose it. I see people out there with T-shirts and rainbow-colored, you know, garb and buttons. I don't have any of that. I don't think you have to show that in any way to be proud of who you are. That's what part of this ordinance is apparently, that people are seeking, is fairness and for people to respect them. I really feel like they're looking for some kind of affirmation. If they don't have that themselves, there's nobody here that can provide that for them. You have to stand up for yourself. And there's been, you know, people saying they're for the ordinance, why they're for the ordinance, why they're not. Just be who you are. We can have diversity, but I don't think we really need to conform. We're all getting along out there, you know, we really are. But I've also, in my observations, seen a lot of disrespect. And that's just in the meeting that we're having tonight. We haven't passed any ordinance. I really feel and I fear that this is going to open a can of worms. I echo what Mr. Bradenbecker, Bradenbecker said just before me about not having the Human Rights Council. You had mentioned in the last meeting that had not been, there was nobody to serve on that council. And with all due respect, Mayor, I believe that is your, you know, your opportunity and responsibility to all these people who are for it, or to anybody here for that matter, who wants to report some kind of discrimination, whether you're gay or not, to fill that board before we move anywhere. I agree with Mr. Bradenbecker. We shouldn't be taking our problems to another county. I also have to say, Mrs. Mitchell, I was a little bit disappointed in you, and with all due respect to the council, I don't envy you at all for this decision that you have to make tonight because it is going to be tough. But after hearing your comments last meeting, after hearing the people that were here two weeks ago, you blatantly said, I think we need to pass this ordinance, based on one conversation that you shared with us with an individual who you said was discriminating. You can pass all the ordinances that you want, but you're not going to change human behavior. Listen, the big topic, one of the big topics in your country right now is the gun laws, right? We already have laws that are not being enforced. Nothing's going to stop people from not, you know, I got it, from expressing their feelings and their prejudices on an ordinance. So anyway, one last thing that I would like to say in terms of the disrespect. Again, I'm Hispanic, and I too have been discriminated against, but I'm not going to start a petition now, because there's a lot of Hispanics that live legally in this, in this town, to start an ordinance for myself. Okay? I know, I think this is very important. I just want to say one last thing.
I'm trying to be equally fair to everyone in the room, and everyone has, everyone has complied.
I understand that.
I hope you would.
I just hope that you will think long and hard on your decision and not let your own personal views basically shade or, you know, listen to everybody and all their comments that were made tonight. I thank you for your opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, are there any others that have signed up for public comment?
Sir, Mayor, can we take a quick break?
Pardon?
Quick bathroom break.
Yes. Before we move from public discussion into the council's discussion, we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll reconvene.